So you don't need to test it with your headset? We're good to go?
Already good.
Okay.
Good morning, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please stand and join me in the flag suit. Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Just to let you know about this meeting, our meeting today is a little bit different than normal. After public comments, we're going to go out and take a little recess to go out and check, look at some new fire engines. We will be completing the meeting and then going into closed session and then we will be taking a tour of the Acres Professional Center, otherwise known as the Cigna Building, that is a public part of the meeting, so the public is invited to join us on the tour. And then we will be coming back for one closed session item. That's our day today, a little different than usual. We'll begin with Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'll turn to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. A few events I wanted to go over this week and remind or make aware the general public. First of all, the Family Healthcare Network is having a clinic grand opening on West Street in Tulare, and that's this Thursday at 3:00 PM. It's going to be a very welcomed addition to Tulare and definitely serving the needs that have been underserved over a period of time in terms of ease of access of healthcare. Also, we had a public comment last week mentioning this, but just a reminder that the Walk to End Alzheimer's will be taking place this Saturday at Mooney Grove Park. The walk, I believe, starts at 10:00 AM. Grandma's House, a great organization in Tulare, will be having their annual fundraiser, their annual gala event, that's going to be on Saturday at 5:30 at the International Agro Center. On Sunday, the International Agro Center will be having a farm show kickoff event at the Chairman's Residence, not this Chairman, but the Chairman of the Farm Show. I won't show up to your house, Steve, don't worry. But, and then we're also going to be having a major ribbon cutting in Tulare, that's going to be taking place on Monday. That's the cart mill overpass, great, it's not a great separation, I'm sorry, ribbon cutting. It's actually, they're not going to be opening the freeway off ramps, on ramps, off ramps, just the overcrossing for east-west thoroughfare in Tulare. And I tell you, that will be very welcome because it's a real pain in the butt to take prosperity all the time. And then lastly, we will be having our third joint meeting with the Tulare River Tribal Council on Monday as well. I look forward to that meeting and we started that back when I was Chair and we've continued since and it's been very good for us to have those conversations and interaction with the only other independent nation within our county boundaries. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Cox.
Okay, I have a few things. At the end of mine, I'm going to give a little bit of time over to Allison, do an update on the challenge event, where we're at with that. Last Wednesday, attended the health fair for the county. Great event, I was able to get my flu shot and that's one of the things, I think, the county does a great job of providing opportunities for all of our employees and their families, correct, Ron, and their families, to come in and get flu shots. Yeah, you shake your leg like that. No, okay. Well, maybe we ought to provide it for families too, okay? There's a thought for next year. But a great opportunity, I know there's a session coming up here in about a week and a half at this, in A and B, and then they're held at Government Plaza and other places, so encourage people to get their flu shots. This evening, I have Leadership Visalia agree to be a mentor for that program, and tonight's the kickoff meeting. Tomorrow morning, Visalia Economic Development Corporation has their monthly meeting. This Friday, I'll be attending the Happy Trails fundraiser for that organization, great organization that provides some wonderful services for some handicap children and adults. Great, a great program. So I'd like to turn the remainder of my time over now to Allison Pierce, who'll give us an update on the challenge.
You've got three minutes, Al.
Ooh, I'll make it quick. Good morning Supervisor, Mr. Russo, Ms. Balesling. Just wanted to give you an update related to the challenge. We've had our training, we'll have a makeup training tomorrow, but as of right now, we have 30 schools participating in this year's challenge. That includes high schools and middle schools. I will say, the community of Lindsay, I believe every middle school and the high schools participating this year, really excited about that. And then you have some schools that we haven't seen in, Wild Dinuba High School back, and of course, some performing schools that have done very well in the past will be back as well. So, we're really excited this year and we are so hopeful. The kickoff event will be Wednesday, September 21st of this year. This year's theme is, oh, I'm sorry, October, October 21st. This year's theme is Step Up in Time, The Future is What You Make It, and October 21st happens to be Back to the Future Day. That's the day Marty McFly went back to the future. So, we're hoping to inspire the kids to make a difference in their school and community and their futures. Thanks.
Marty McFly, haven't heard that name in a while. Supervisor Shida.
Last week, many of us on the board attended the RCRC annual meeting, and it was quite informative. I think for people who, it was their first time at the conference, found it very enlightening and understand why we support RCRC. We had a couple sessions, one was about marijuana legislation that was pending, and we had some experts there. And we still don't know where the marijuana bill is going to end up in the future. But the one thing that CSAC and RCRC has always lobbied for was for local jurisdictions to declare if they are going to allow marijuana growing and dispensing in their counties or not to allow it. So, in essence, you could have dry counties. In many of the states that have passed recreational marijuana, you have many counties that have opted out and are considered dry counties. Lester Snow was there, he used to be in charge of the Department of Water in California, and he brought up an item about Tempest Flat, which we've heard from many people, is that we need to get our act together in the valley so we can apply for those funds from Prop 1. And the last evening there, my wife continued to be the raffle queen, so she was very happy. And on Saturday, I attended the Sequoia Park 125th Anniversary. And I remember, when I first was elected, we had a meeting with someone from the House of Representatives, talking about his concern that we were not seeing the growth of visitors in the national park system. And he was concerned without having the growth of visitors, that they may not get the funding in the future for the park service. But Supervisor Woody Smek said that this year, we had about 1.7 million visitors to Sequoia National Park. When I had these conversations when I was first elected, we were looking at maybe 1.2 million. And he thought that if it wasn't for the fires, that we've had the rough fire, we could have approached 2 million visitors in the Sequoia National Park. What was amazing to me too, is driving there, there was a lot of traffic because it was a free day in the park, but the people that were there mostly were very young. I'd say a lot of them were in their twenties, so that's very encouraging for the future of the park. This Saturday, we have the Lindsay Menudal Cook-Off, and that will start at 11:00.
Are you a tasting judge?
Absolutely. One of the dishes I enjoy.
Enjoy it for both of us.
And I'll eat Ennis's share too. We had a Board of Directors meeting back on RCRC, and RCRC has joined a coalition, and it's basically called the California Forest Watershed Alliance. And what we're trying to do is figure out, what are we going to do with all these dead trees, all these dead pine trees that we have in California? So they just had a kickoff meeting the other day, and we'll see what happens in the future. And that's all I have.
Thank you Supervisor Ennis.
Well, I can tell you what's happened to quite a few of them, they burned up. Okay, this Thursday night, I'll be attending the Leadership Porterville Class kickoff for the 2016 class. Saturday, Sierra View Medical Centers having their big fundraiser at Dancing with the Stars out at the fairgrounds, and our illustrious Supervisor Alan Shida is going to be one of the judges. So, good luck to you. I just want to commend RMA, not only for what's going on on the roads and stuff right now. I got tied up in 256 the other day, but boy, that road definitely needed some work. So, seeing a lot of roadwork going on around the county. Also, want to commend their marijuana task, their code enforcement. I'm getting six or seven or eight pieces of paper across my desk every week, and people continue to call in, we continue to fight these guys. So, if we get, if they go to this new law where marijuana, they're going to try to halfway legalize it in California and they can give us the ability not to grow it, I hope we force all these guys into these counties that want to grow it. So, we'll just continue our deal. My favorite saying is whack and stack, and that's what I like to do, go out and get this stuff and get these guys, because it's all illegal. Marijuana, they aren't smoking it for medical purposes, we know that. So, thanks to the Sheriff's Department for all they're doing with their task force, marijuana task force. I know they arrested, they had probably a third of Plainview the other day that was growing it, so you got 200 homes, I think there was 70 that was growing marijuana. So, constantly got eyes and ears out there, we constantly fighting this deal, so I hope we get to the point somewhere down the road that we'll have enough control where we can stamp it out. So, that's kind of where we're going. So, thanks to RMA and thanks to the sheriff, and thanks to all the county employees for what you do every day. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ennis. I wanted to follow up on a comment that Supervisor Ennis was talking about. One of the things we saw at the RCRC Conference, by the way, RCRC is Rural County Caucus. In county world, it's based upon populations of your county. We are considered a suburban county, much to the surprise, almost every new supervisor that goes to a CSAC conference walks over to the Rural County Caucus thinking, we must be in the Rural County Caucus because we're rural. But it's all based on population. So, we have joined the Rural Caucus because we feel like we have so many commonalities, and it's really been very, I think, a very good thing for us to do. But one of the things at the meeting that they presented were some Google map shots of, I believe it was Mendocino, Trinity County, I think it was.
Humboldt.
Humboldt County. And if you know anything about Humboldt County and marijuana growing, I mean, it's like a long-term love affair, whatever. I mean, they've had it there for years, but it's changed. And they were showing these pictures from, you know, from the satellite pictures, and where was a beautiful green landscape, it literally looked like craters from Mars. I mean, just all these clearings that have been created, and they have hot houses, water being drained out of the creeks and rivers, roads being bulldozed right through creek beds. And you know what I came away with is, I'm so happy with what we're doing in Tulare County. I mean, we have been aggressively enforcing our laws, aggressively fighting this, and because of it, as difficult as it is, it's manageable. You look at what they have there, it is totally out of control. They have federal agencies working, and State of California Water Resource people doing stuff. We were shocked. They had a team of people, they had in this last year visited 40 growing sites, 40, and they figure there's, what was it, 4,000 or something? I mean, they said 40,000, but I don't think it was just for their county. But literally, they have thousands of sites. And so, they visited 40 sites, and we're working with them to try to come into compliance. I just couldn't believe it. But anyway, I'm so pleased with what we're doing in Tulare County, because we've been aggressively fighting this, and because of it, we have been able, we have a much more manageable position than they have there. They are totally out of control. We had a very successful raisin day in Dinuba this last Saturday, a great event, well-attended parade, thanks to the fire department for providing Air Force One to drive me through the parade. You know, I commented this morning to our Rotary Club, you have thousands of people at this event. I don't know that it was one incident of drunkenness, disorderly conduct, fighting, I mean, it was just a good family affair. And it's nice to see that in communities where we can get together, big crowds of people, just as families, and have a good time and not be fearful about, you know, going there and somebody being shot or something. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to add something about marijuana. What shocked us, what Supervisor Werthe was saying shocked us, is that we have people in our environmental health department helping the marijuana growers terrace their properties to where they don't have runoff into the stream beds.
He's referring not to our people, but to you.
The state. And my opinion in Tulare County, if we find one of those people on one of our sites that work for the State of California, we'll arrest them, just like we arrest people out there. So, that's our attitude.
All right. That will conclude our Board of Supervisors Matters, and at this time, we go to Item 2, a presentation by Paul Yoder from Strategic Local Government, our lobbyist in Sacramento, giving us an update on state legislation. Good morning, Paul, welcome to Tulare County.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Ms. CEO, Balesling. Thank you for letting me be here today. So the legislature's been out a session for two and a half weeks, starting to exhale, quite honestly. Nice feeling. There are hundreds of bills on the governor's desk, the governor has until October 11th to act on bills. So, on October 12th, the county will be getting multiple reports, just making sure everybody knows what actually the new laws are going to be, most of which will take effect on January 1st, obviously. For counties, we've talked about money and talked about the state budget, and the state did repay the counties and cities for pre-2004 mandate costs, so that's a couple million dollars one time in repayment to Tulare. And then I think the other big-ticket financial item is the state appropriated $150 million from Medi-Cal Administration, bringing the total to $250 million to the counties in about an 18-month span. And so, it's nice to see the Brown Administration hanging in there on that for the counties. Easily, the two most controversial bills or bill packages, one of, the first one would be the one you were just discussing, the three-bill package on medical marijuana. For the public's benefit, those bills are Senate Bill 643, Assembly Bill 266, and Assembly Bill 243. All three of those bills are on the governor's desk. There are, in going through the bills, the governor and his staff have already discovered some technical flaws. There's already been a letter to the Assembly Journal stating that one thing in particular in terms of implementation dates, should the bills be signed into law, that's going to need to be fixed. I think, assuming the governor signs a three-bill package, you can expect him to issue, also issue signing messages and talk about cleanup that needs to occur. And then a little bit later in my presentation, I'll talk about that package and the potential interplay between that and an initiative on the November 2016 ballot. But suffice to say right now, the impetus to really get that three-bill package to the governor at the end of this 2015 legislative session really had to do mainly with the legislature wanting anyone running an initiative for legalization to have to respond to the medical regime that they were proposing, rather than the legislature having to come back in 2016 and try to react to whatever language was in a potential initiative. So that really was a big part of the impetus. The other really controversial piece of legislation, obviously, I think folks in the valley are very aware, is Senate Bill 350. That bill was chosen because the governor said he had 350% reduction goals, so 350 ended up becoming the bill number for Senate Pro Tem Deleon's legislation. In the end, the most controversial piece of that bill, the part that would have required oil consumption in the State of California to be reduced by 50%, that came out of the bill, press wrote extensively about it. But not only did that happen with respect to the bill, but the politics surrounding that bill arguably really fed into a change in leadership in the legislature and the election of Anthony Rendon to Speaker. At one point, on that bill, and in terms of what was happening behind the scenes, at least half of the Assembly Democratic Caucus went into the governor's office and said, we need this bill amended, and we need it substantively amended, or we're going to have a big problem. Half of the Assembly Democratic Caucus. I know some folks like to describe them as moderates. You know, you can throw away the terms, I think, a little bit on some of these issues at this point. There were members who showed up in the governor's office on that item very specifically, who really have never fallen neatly into any category, so that coalition was very broad. And like I said, I think it did inform the change in speakership, at least to significant degree. We're also going to have a new Assembly Republican Leader, Chad Mays, and obviously, we're going to have a new Senate Republican Leader, Gene Fuller. So the valley will be represented going into 2016. Governor's called two special sessions, one on transportation, one on healthcare. Both of the packages of bills that would really, that the administration wants to see, will require two-thirds vote ultimately in the legislature. So that means it's just complicated politically, by virtue of just the votes not being there right now, frankly. You will see the transportation special session convene a conference committee during the fall, this legislative interim. They will meet probably several times to try to tease out different proposals and see what has maybe the critical mass to get to that two-thirds. They've started naming conferees for transportation, but not yet for healthcare, so we'll see where that goes. There is a call for a third extraordinary session, four, excuse me, four dozen members of the legislature. So over a third of the legislature, at the very last week of the legislative year, signed a letter to Governor Brown asking him to call in a third extraordinary session pertaining to the drought. So far, the governor hasn't done that, that's in spite of all the wildfires, in spite of obviously, you know, going on a fifth year of drought. And for whatever reason, the administration, here to now, does not want to call that third extraordinary session. Looking ahead to early 2016, we will obviously have a new state budget. A little bit worried, even though things have settled out on AB 109, it was in today's paper, if you read today's paper, that the state is pushing up again against that court-imposed cap on the, how many inmates can actually be housed in state penal institutions? Last time they were up against that cap, that's really kind of what forced AB 109. So I'm not, I don't anticipate another layer of realignment or some new big proposal, but I won't be surprised if the governor proposes something that is going to help the state address, pushing up against that jail cap again. So we'll be vigilant against, or with respect to that, obviously. Just generally, the state's fiscal outlook though, really does seem to be pretty good. The stock market roller coaster of a month ago notwithstanding, the state's economy still seems to be pretty robust, and I think the governor's going to have a fair amount of money to budget in January. So last thing, and I'm happy to take questions, looking ahead to the November ballot, November 2016, obviously, we're going to have, I think, probably a pretty heated presidential race, we're going to have a US Senate race, it's been a while in California since we had one of those, and then we're going to have initiatives. I referenced a marijuana legalization initiative. I want to tell the board today that for all the initiatives on that front that have been filed with the Secretary of State's office so far, we still believe that the one that probably would have the greatest chance of collecting signatures and getting on the ballot ultimately, that one probably hasn't hit the street yet, and I would expect it to hit the street in about two or three weeks from now. Going to one of the supervisor's comments from earlier, we are told that that legalization initiative actually would sort of mirror the medicinal regime now sitting on the governor's desk, and there actually would be a fair amount of local control, and there would be the potential for counties to be dry, so-called dry. But ink's not done on the drafting of those initiatives, and so, you know, we'll keep the board informed on that. You will see a school bond in the neighborhood of $9 billion. You will see a referendum on the plastic bag elimination in California. You will see an initiative, probably will qualify with enough signatures, I'd say, in two or three weeks, called the No Blank Checks Initiative, and that'll prohibit, or excuse me, it will require a vote of the people whenever government in California issues revenue bonds, not general obligation bonds, but revenue bonds, $2 billion or greater. It's our understanding that the people collecting signatures on that do have sufficient signatures to qualify, and that'll probably be official, like I said, a couple weeks from now. I think we will see a proposal to extend the Prop 30 taxes. Did Jerry Brown campaign for it, but the interesting thing this time around is Governor Brown probably won't campaign for the extension. Whereas Prop 30 that's in place right now, raise the sales tax and raise the income tax in California, the new initiative probably will not propose to continue the sales tax increase. So that sales tax increase will expire June 30th of 2016, but it will propose a new income tax hike going forward, beginning January 1, 2017. And I do expect to see at least one initiative, if not two competing initiatives, to extend those income taxes, à la Proposition 30. And then last but not least, obviously, a lot of controversy in the legislature and around the state about immunizations this year in Senate Bill 277, which the governor did sign into law. There has been an attempted referendum on that, to place the matter before the voters on that statewide ballot, but it looks like you only have 90 days after a bill is signed into law to collect signatures to force a referendum. And whereas the folks that don't want plastic bags eliminated were successful in placing a referendum on the ballot, it looks like the folks that have been opposed to SB 277 are going to fail, and so that matter won't be before the voters, I don't expect, in November 2016. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Question, Board members?
Yeah, I have a definite question, but I'm just still kind of taken aback. That was a lot of information, Paul, thank you very much. Sounds like the legislature's been very busy, so 2,000-plus bills still, yeah, so pretty interesting. One of the items I wanted to ask you about, it has a local importance to the district that I represent, and that is related to the racial mascots bill. That bill is sitting on the governor's desk, would you give me a little update on that?
Yeah, happy to. That's Assembly Bill 30 by Suma Manaleho. That bill would require the phasing out of mascots, I believe, by 2018. Not a lot of, frankly, controversy in the legislature. We had hopes that if some of the tribes in California could weigh in and inform the governor that maybe they were okay with the continued use of the nickname, that maybe that would result in the administration pushing back on the bill and getting the bill amended a little bit before it got down to his desk. That unfortunately did not occur, and so I do expect that the governor's going to sign AB 30. I would be a little surprised if he didn't, Supervisor.
Okay, so even though there have been letters of support of the use of certain names in certain communities, you still feel that the governor is going to be signing that bill?
I do.
Okay. And then lastly, on the public safety realignment, AB 109 potentially number two, which could come next year, what do you really think that's going to end up looking like? Because it seems like with Prop 47, so many criminals are actually left out or sent back to the streets and have their sentences shorter, felonies, misdemeanors, et cetera, et cetera. How can the state be pushing up on their number of incarcerated individuals in the California system when so much has been passed on to the local level? I have fear that if that, if they push even more, we're not going to have any capacity either. So, maybe just a little bit more detail in that, what you think that's going to look like.
Yeah. I think what you may see the administration propose, rather than another sort of layer of realignment. of realignment, is policy change. Had some interesting conversations with your staff, meeting with them yesterday, looking forward to 2016. There is a model for the state-county relationship that exists in the juvenile justice arena, where the state ultimately went was to charge counties for certain types of placements in the state facilities. I'm not telling you that's what's going to happen, but I think in talking to state officials, they continue to be a little chagrined, from their perspective, that certain parts of the state are still sending, sort of, using their words, disproportionately high numbers of folks into the state prison system. And so I think what you can maybe see is some policy proposals by Governor Brown meant to really address that. We've seen that, that's the last thing we saw from the Brown administration, were policy proposals, most of which were enacted. State still has a receiver for the prison system, and state still really has, with all due respect to the state, they still haven't really cracked the nut on some of the medical issues in the state penal system. So I think there's still more there that the governor's going to want to try to address. But I'm hopeful, Supervisor, that it's not going to be, you know, what we would think of as another wave, I guess, added to the AB 109 equation. Like I said, more policy changes addressed to keep, frankly, counties from, you know, sending folks to the state system.
That's good to hear. I'm glad to get that clarification. And then the last thing that I'm going to ask is, if the governor does grant...
You told me the last time.
Sorry. I just, I keep thinking, Steve, my mind's just flowing. But one question that I have is, if the governor does acquiesce to the request for another special session related to water, what can we expect could come out of that from the legislature and the governor?
Yeah. I think, you know, we had two drought packages, a couple hundred million dollars in both. The Proposition 1 money is starting to, you know, work its way through the various state departments and agencies. I failed to mention that one of the initiatives that we may see on the November 2016 ballot is another water bond that's actually being proposed by Jerry Merrill, who, folks will remember, started out in the Brown administration, working for the governor and working on the BDCP. He's got, wears another hat now, and he's out talking to folks about another seven-plus billion to go on the November ballot, so it'll fill up the buckets even more. The legislature has resisted, and the administration resisted, the temptation to sort of short-circuit the process through the departments and agencies. I think, God forbid, we have a fifth year of drought. I certainly would like to think that the legislature, at least, if not the governor, the legislature will be willing to revisit. Just a question of getting money out sooner. Process is great, but there are shovel-ready projects around the state that could help people get water, in some instances, actually create new water. Everybody, you know, interested in creating new water now, I think. And I think all the projects that I'm aware of, and I think for everyone I'm aware of, there's got to probably be 10 that I'm not. And so I think with this next legislature, like I said, God forbid we see a fifth year of drought, that's a direction I think a lot of us are going to want to push them in, is trying to get some of that money out the door sooner, to make a difference in people's lives.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Supervisor Sheeda?
You brought up a point about the state approaching their maximum ceiling for prisoners again. And that really concerns me, and I'm sure all of us, and Supervisor Vanderpoel mentioned it again. Since we've turned almost everything into a misdemeanor, and we're still increasing our state population, are we, as local government, becoming the graduate school for these criminals because they have to get the charges or they're convicted on are at a higher level than they used to be? We're getting the worst of the worst going back into the state prison system to increase those numbers. And the brunt of what they're doing to graduate and back to the state prison is happening in local jurisdictions. Has anybody, has the governor's office ever thought about what's happening with the increase in state prisoners?
They have. And I appreciate your question, Supervisor, because it lets me come back at this. I don't know if you're going to like what I'm about to say, but I think another thing that you may see in the governor's January budget is a way to address, let's say, sort of incarceration facilities, state and local, being maxed out right now, as you may see the Brown administration propose, another couple hundred million dollars for county jail construction. And I think, along with some of those policy changes that I've already discussed, I think that's where you may see, to the extent the governor wants to invest resources to expand capacity in California, I think he's going to propose to expand the capacity at the local level.
You know, the other item you brought up is the school bond. If you drive through Tulare County, or probably most of the Valley counties, you'll see all of the new schools we've built in the last 10 years. And I wonder why are we looking at funding more of them, and some of these jurisdictions have a declining population? And as we go through this drought, we're having seen some declining population in our student enrollment, these parents moving to where jobs are. So, and then the state paid off all the money they owed the schools, and everybody's building. And I don't see a need for another school bond to be building schools. And no answer, right?
Is that a question? I'm happy to, well, just throw out very quickly is, there's actually, that funding that exists at state level is down to its last penny. And it's not just the schools community, but it's the builders in California who, I think, are very eager for another bond. There's a lot of rehab money. It's not just new school construction, be a lot of rehab money. But I think really, to maybe bedrock, to your point, Supervisor, what bonds go on each ballot, I think that's something that Governor Brown, for starters, is watching very, very closely. The schools were actually, in their minds, they were supposed to be able to go on the ballot in 2014, because they get to go on the ballot every so often. And the governor, I think to his credit, convinced them to go on 2016 so that the water bond could go on the 2014 ballot and be on that ballot as the only statewide bond at the time. So just, when we do these bonds and what they're for is a major policy question for the state, which is...
I would encourage everyone in the audience to submit names for Tulare Union High School, since they'll be changing their name.
Supervisor Cox, you said...
Thanks, Alan.
Supervisor Cox, you had a couple of questions.
About the Indians. Okay. A comment for Supervisor Sheeda real quick here. School population in Visalia is going up. A lot of these new schools that were built at capacity, the overcapacity, they're busing, they're moving boundaries around. So when we did, we do see the population, the unincorporated maybe going down or staying flat, population in the cities are going up. So big demand for schools, I know in Visalia. Two things, Paul. Neither of them controversial. High-speed rail?
No controversy there.
No controversy there at all. You know, and what I'm thinking about, you know, the train is out of the station, so it's moving, it's going, it's being built. Discussion about Phase 2. You know, this built, this is split up into phases, but I'm going to call it one phase, Bakersfield, you know, the north there, said, wherever it stops. I'm going to call that Phase 1. Phase 2, you know, identifying funds, because I don't think we're going to be able to spend the federal money that's already been allocated for that. What attempts are being made to make sure we secure that money, because it's building money, it's not right-away money, it's not, you know, it's tracks-on-the-ground money. So that's one. And then the second one is a very big concern to me, the continued tax on our retirement system for public employees. Was Peppra not enough? When you look at Peppra, when we looked at that and held it up against Tulare County and went, hey, great, you know, that's what we're doing, and as a matter of fact, we might have been doing even a little bit under that. So we were kind of the model for the public agency retirements, but now there's additional tax, possible referendums, you know, kind of has me concerned.
I'll take it in reverse, if I can, on pension reform, latest and greatest, as you may have seen, is former Mayor of San Jose Chuck Reed has gone to title and summary with his most recent proposal on pension reform. Soon as he did that, a lot of interest groups in California said it's flawed, and here's where, and here's how. So he just announced this week that he's going to redraft it and actually take it back to the Secretary of State's office again for a new title and summary on a new initiative. He's still got time to do that. He probably could even rewrite it one or maybe two more times before he really runs up against the deadline. You've got to get people in the field to collect those signatures to get on that November ballot, so that's the interplay there. High-speed rail, I'll try to answer this. To me, it's become very complicated. And so just in the shortest amount of time I can think of to respond, the governor has convinced the legislature to allow some of the cap-and-trade monies to be set aside for high-speed rail. There's a lot of cap-and-trade money that ended up not being appropriated in 2015 because folks couldn't reach agreement. And there are rumors that that actually, some cap-and-trade money may ultimately become part of the transportation package in the extraordinary session. There are some who believe that if the governor really could get enough money from cap-and-trade into high-speed rail, at some point, not only do you have that steady revenue stream, but at some point, you might be able to do a revenue bond. And that's why on the No Blank Checks initiative that I discussed, it's going to be on the November 2016 ballot, for that reason as well as some others, I do think you're going to see Governor Brown come out in opposition to that ballot measure. But the cap-and-trade money, Supervisor, I think are probably the biggest, most robust revenue stream right now that the Brown administration has identified. And they are trying to figure out a way to keep high-speed rail going that doesn't necessarily involve the federal funds, or additional federal funds, or even, you know, foreign capital, or even U.S. capital, as some have suggested, might ultimately come into play. I don't know if folks saw it, but apparently, some of the folks in the capital market are exploring, could high-speed rail be built between Los Angeles and Las Vegas right now? And so that's not a rumor or a myth, or, you know, anybody's invention, mental invention that that ultimately could be what helps get a high-speed rail line built, because folks are talking about that from L.A. to Las Vegas. So whether...
They've been talking about that for 15 years, and there's nothing new there.
Yep. So whether that ultimately comes into play for high-speed rail here in California, I don't know. I'll come back to this. I said I was going to try to do this simply, and I clearly failed, right? Everybody agrees I failed. But I think Governor Brown wants to leave office believing that he has created the most robust ongoing funding stream for high-speed rail he possibly could have. And I think he believes the way to do that is through the cap-and-trade appropriations.
What a legacy, huh?
Yep.
That and twin tunnels. Supervisor James?
Yeah, I just have one comment. Have they ever thought about, you know, we've got an overpopulation problem in our prisons? I know there was four prisons when I was a kid going up. Now we've got 27, 25. How about enforcing the death penalty? Let's go ahead and enforce the death penalty. That's a big deterrent to people. Life in prison doesn't mean anything to anybody.
Well, I thought you were going to reduce the population. Okay, all right.
Well, that's right. That would reduce it. There's a lot of people on death row, not only in California, all over the United States.
You're saving the easier questions for last. No, I, Supervisor, I can't even, maybe somebody else can recall, I can't recall the last time anyone was put to death in the state of California. So, and it remains controversial, even to the point of if someone is put to death under the death penalty, just the method that's utilized for that. Even the method has become controversial, so...
Cruel punishment, if the guy beats somebody to death at the baseball bat. You know, I understand, but, I mean, to me, if we're going to have a death penalty, let's carry it out.
Right.
That's the big stick you got to keep people from, the guy says, well, I know I'm going to get the death penalty, but I'm not going to go to death. They're just going to take care of me for the rest of my life, so that's my theory on that. And how about our weight fees on our vehicles? Any way to get that back out of the general fund?
I think, on that, I do think that is something that, I will say, all sides understand, is one of the most controversial... Well, first, a thing that needs to be fixed, lest the transportation package be more controversial than maybe it needs to be. I do think the majority Democrats in this legislature, both houses, really do understand that. I think the Brown administration understands that. We'll just see if it really plays out that way. You know, obviously, the plan is still, in the majority party's mind, anyway, the plan is still to raise certain taxes, certain fees, try to raise about $3.5 billion, $4 billion annually. But I do think that that weight fee issue can be fixed. I do. I think it has to be fixed before a lot of members who might be on the fence, in terms of potentially voting for a two-thirds bill, get off that fence. I think that's got to be fixed.
Yeah, I was going to follow up, but that was my question on the weight fees. And also, I mean, I guess the benefit of having a two-thirds requirement on these would be that there's an opportunity to really push some of these matters. The other one, besides the weight fees, which is $1 billion a year, that were taken out of transportation, put into the general fund to pay off general obligation bonds, which is a bait-and-switch thing from, you know, it's horrible. And while you can perhaps understand that, when the state was in tremendous financial constraints and the bad economy, the Great Recession, now that we have moved beyond that, you know, the thought it should be immediately, you know, put back where it was, because that was a quote temporary thing. And of course, obviously, it's not, the idea here now is to try to keep it there. So I think that would be one thing. The other thing that strikes me is that, going back a number of years, when the legislature had the authority, whenever they had financial problems, they used to just sweep the transportation accounts and spend the money for their own obligations. And so paying back that money, I mean, because at the time, it was supposed to be borrowed money, and of course, there's no note with the mandate on it, it's just ongoing, and so it never gets paid back. So three things that strike me that could be helpful to try to enlist support of getting the two-thirds majority. One would be a restoration of weight fees, paying back the money that was borrowed out by the legislature in years past. And the other one would be meaningful reform of Caltrans. And I don't mean general platitude, I mean very specific milestones, because you can look, there's many different things there in terms of cost of operation that are way out of proportion anyplace else in the country. So in my mind, you need all the above before anybody should pay one more penny in taxes, because we're already paying, we have the heaviest taxed gasoline, fuel tax in the nation, and yet we have some of the worst roads in the nation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I agree. And I think there are a lot of members of the legislature who agree, and I think that the additional element that has to be part of the package, for starters, is what's described as lockboxing.
Right, right.
Really, sort of once and for all saying, you know, if we're going to increase, or if we're going to create this amount of money on an annual basis, it has to stay in the transportation arena. And I got to say, I think there's pretty broad support for that at this point.
There's another subtlety there, though, and that is that when we say the transportation arena, that can be a black hole. Is high-speed rail in a transportation arena? Is transit in a transportation arena? I mean, we're talking about the people who drive cars and trucks, paying the freight, and then people who ride on buses, having everything, you know, greatly subsidized out of those monies.
Right.
And the same thing with high-speed rail. So it's not just dedicated to transportation. It needs to be dedicated to rehab, construction, expansion, where we need it, real transportation on roads that people drive that are paying the freight.
Well, one thing you may see, especially if the votes get complicated in either house, we think in our shop, what there's ultimately, you know, you're up against that deadline, and you really want to get something done, and what you can get the votes for potentially is to put maybe two measures on the November 2016 ballot. One that proposes the fee hikes that will be necessary to raise $3.5 billion, $4 billion. Another one that would be a proposed amendment to the state's constitution that would clearly describe the purposes for which, if the voters say yes to the first measure, you know, clearly define the purposes for which those revenues can be utilized, and maybe even define the purposes for which they can't. And so what ultimately would be the vote in the legislature, because it still requires a two-thirds vote to put something on the ballot, but the vote you may see in the legislature would be to put something before the voters on that statewide ballot. That'll sort of be the last ditch hail mary maybe on transportation in 2016.
My last question. I didn't say, this is my first one. Williamson Act. And again, going back to when the state had its financial difficulties, the subvention, which never amounted to more than $35 million maximum... which never amounted to more than $35 million maximum, which in California budget hardly equates to budget dust really, was taken away from the counties, never been restored. Again, even though we're back with a healthy economy, we're told, and budget balance surpluses amounting to hundreds of millions of dollars, yet it's not been restored. I get that and that may just be the way it's going to be forever. But again, as the economy starts to grow and cities begin to grow again and they start annexing more property into those cities, there's going to be cancellation fees. And it was one thing for the state to receive those cancellation fees, you and I have had this conversation many times, when they were subventing. When they're no longer subventing and the counties have been going without tax revenue for decades because of our support of Williamson Act and farming, the opportunity to recapture some of that money should go back to the counties. And I would hope that that's something that's on the table. And again, it's kind of being proactive because as of now, we had a lot of annexations that went into the cities, fill land that hasn't been developed and it will probably take another decade perhaps in many cases, but that time is coming. And I feel like now would be the time to work to try to get that fixed.
Mr. Chair, you know, a lot of us at lobby on behalf of counties, I got to say, not to be too self-congratulatory, and it was obviously helpful that the economy improved. We fixed a lot of things, I think in the last two years, CSAC, RCRC, our firm, we fixed a lot of things. Williamson Act absolutely stands out as the one thing we haven't been able to fix. And we continue to just rack our brains about any way to do that. And you just have my commitment that we will continue to do that.
And I think there's a very intrinsic, good argument about that. Like I said, if you're going to continue to not subvent, you know, they did pass legislation, the county Tulare took advantage of it, we've been able to recapture about two-thirds of what we were getting from subvention dollars. We can live with that, but this idea of having to give up, you know, when these contracts are going to be terminated for development and there's going to be a charge back against for doing that, there is absolutely no justification for going to the state of California. Seems to me like that ought to be something which ought to resonate with our legislature and a governor, so.
Yeah. We've, I think the sense in which we've been successful so far is, and this is how we got the Brown, a big part of how we got the Brown administration to agree to start paying again on the payment in lieu of taxes issue, obviously a separate issue, but I think we've been successful in convincing this administration that, you know, promises need to be kept. For someone to believe you tomorrow, they got to feel like, you know, you made, you kept the promise that you made to them yesterday. And I do think, it may seem, I don't know, a little too ephemeral, but I do think that argument has actually helped us in the Brown administration, at least it did on Pilt. And we're just going to keep pushing on the Williamson Act and see what we can do with our partners, obviously in the ag community and even the environmental community. We'll just keep pushing, trying to find a way.
Paul, thank you so much for being here today. Appreciate your comments as always, your good work in Sacramento. And for those, you know, I mean, it's an interesting world today because if you go back and look at county government 30, 40 years ago, before the advent of Prop 13, counties were an island to themselves. They raised their own revenues, they funded their own projects, they didn't really look at the state or the federal government. And all that changed with Prop 13. And now, as a county supervisor, I believe if we're not engaged at the state and federal levels, we are not doing a good job of representing our clients, our constituents, and we need good lobbies like yourself in order to make that happen. So I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Thank you.
All right. We will now come to item three, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are welcome to come forward and give us your comments. You have three minutes. No, we can take that one. Chief, did you want to talk about fire trucks now? This is your time.
This is my time. Thank you very much. Good morning. Yes, we do have two engines, two brand-new engines, two new patrols out there, as well as the latest OES Type III engine, which is a wildfire-type engine, wildland-type. We had worked in order to secure the funding for a vehicle replacement program, which we have done, and thank you all for that. And this is a continuing effort on our part to replace our aging vehicles. As you know, fire trucks have a life, an expected life of about 15 years. That's one five. And consequently, after that, they get to the point where in order to keep them on the road, you have to keep repairing them. And a lot of times, it then becomes more expensive to keep repairing them than to replace them. And so what we have out there is an example of that, a replacement program. These are two Rosenbauer engines, fire engines, they have 750-gallon tanks and two Rosenbauer patrols. Pardon?
Water tanks, water tanks, not fuel tanks?
I'm sorry. Water tanks, right. And two Rosenbauer patrols. The patrols are utilized for vehicle accidents, medical aids, they also have a water tank in them. The engines are used for structural fires and some of the other hazardous material incidents, et cetera. Now, we actually had an opportunity while we were talking to Rosenbauer about the fabrication of these units, to make a decision as to whether to have them delivered to us or whether to go pick them up ourselves. Well, it turns out that if they delivered them to us, it was going to cost us over $15,000. But we chose to go ahead and send our staff to go pick them up, which they did, brought them back, and it cost us a little bit over $2,000 in expenses to bring them back. Ergo, we saved the county and ourselves about $13,000. So we're very proud of these units. We locate them in areas that need them, and this is certainly a boon for the fire department. So I welcome you to go out and look at them.
And we're going to do that, I think we will do the consent calendar real quickly because that'll just take us a minute and then we're going to take adjournment for about 15 minutes, so we can take a look.
You bet. Thank you.
So anybody else wishing to address or any public comment, period? Seeing no one, we'll move to our consent calendar. Are there any items which members wish to handle separately? Do not entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please pass your votes. Votes are unanimous. Now, we're going to take about a 15-minute break, go out and join us and take a look at our new moving apparatus out there. Okay, that's right, it's just the, we have to adjourn to closed session, right?
Right, so we need to come in and reconvene and then recess to...
I could do that now because we're not going to...
Yeah, sure. And I think Kathleen...
So at 10:20, I'm calling this meeting back to order and then we're going to convene into closed session at this time. And I don't know whether or not there'll be an announcement out. I believe there, we do anticipate an announcement out, so.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I have to go ahead and I have to say the letters on your table.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, your board's adjourning to closed session on items A through D, as in dog, on your board's closed session agenda and addendum. Item C is off agenda.
Very good. Thank you.
And I do anticipate it in the news. Announcement out of closed session today, September 29, 2015, by Kathleen Bales-Lang, Tulare County Council, in the matter of item A on the board's closed session agenda, Ramirez et al versus County of Tulare et al. The board accepted a settlement offer signed by the opposing party in that case. The adverse parties are Joel Ramirez individually and as successor to Joel A. Ramirez Jr. and Gloria Viscrando individually and as successor in interest to Joel A. Ramirez Jr. This case involves wrongful death, violation of civil rights, breach of contract, and negligence. A copy of the settlement may be requested as a public record. The acceptance of settlement was on motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, on a 5-0 vote. There are no other announcements.